Regular meeting of the county board of commissioners, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. Thank you and welcome, everybody. Do we have any additions or edits to our agenda?
County Attorney John Barrett does not have any additions. He is on the agenda, so we'll remove that.
Okay. Terry, anything?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Well, the agenda will stand as amended then. Constituent time. Is there anybody who'd like to address the commissioners this morning? If so, please come forward.
He's gonna go first, we know that.
Okay. We'd have to make sure the microphone is on so everybody can hear us.
Appears to be red.
And please introduce yourself and where you live.
Good morning. My name is Heather Burquist. Thank you for your work on behalf of the citizens of Delta County. I'm an engaged citizen living in Eckert and Marion Road, to be specific. I'm sure you noticed I brought my four children with me today. I home educate them, and so today, this is civics class. At home more often than they might prefer, we discuss the requirements of a functioning representative government, as well as the significance of a free press. I hope we can all agree that a representative government requires a strong working relationship between the elected representatives and the citizens, as well as a functioning free press. I come to you today deeply concerned by the suppression of my voice and concerns by the Delta County Independent, as well as the lack of acknowledgement and response to my email to each of you commissioners and the public health director at Delta County. I'm an outspoken advocate for our children and for our health, and it is for those reasons that I wrote to you and to the paper almost two weeks ago. Unfortunately, I have not received any response from anyone, and the paper has thus far declined to print my letter. Today, I will share with you my unprinted letter and revisit the questions that I emailed my letter. Cloud-like streaks linger in the sky resembling a tic-tac-toe board above our community. Once considered unusual, this sight has become increasingly familiar in Delta County and across our state and country. What exactly are we looking on? Noticeably absent is any entity proudly claiming responsibility and touting the benefits or benign nature of this sky art. If the substances intentionally left in our skies are helpful, shouldn't society hail the brave pilots as heroes and rave over the philanthropy of the funders of such a planet-saving effort? Unless, of course, the taxpayers are the unwitting underwriters of such. In any case, we are entitled to answers, and a lot of them. Where exactly should a concerned citizen and taxpayer direct questions about this practice? Unlike quickly dissipating water vapor, what is the substance that remains in the sky for hours? Why is it there? How much does it cost? How long does it last? Does it become a part of our food and water supply temporarily or indefinitely? How might a person ascertain its impact on gardens, orchards, pets, and livestock? How might parents consider the significance of this unknown substance on their children's developing minds and bodies? The alarming epidemic of chronic childhood illness has gained national attention, prompting a recent HHS press conference identifying environmental toxins as a specific focus of further study and scrutiny. At a minimum, the unknown substances in our skies should be publicly identified, evaluated, and ruled out as potential toxins. The lack of satisfactory explanation for this seemingly organized effort is disconcerting and raises many questions. The potential for significant impact on our water, food supply, environment, health, and our children demands answers. In my email, I left you with many questions. Here's a small sample. Is this a taxpayer-funded effort? What specific program is in effect? What's its purpose and how is its success measured? What local pilots or airlines are used? What contracts have been granted to them? Has Delta County approved funding or grants? What are the planes leaving behind? Is it benign? How do I know? Lest our community or elected leaders be tempted to dismiss my concerns, it's worth noting that 31 states have already introduced legislation to ban or severely limit geoengineering and weather modification operations. In the last few days, Florida has even criminalized it as a felony offense, including fines and prison time. Nationwide, many people are speaking out and demanding transparency about the impact on the health of our bodies, our children, our soil, our air, and our food supply. Knowing and consenting to what we and our local environment are being exposed to is not trivial and is something our elected leaders must take seriously. Please let me know when I can expect answers to my emailed questions and how I can help Delta County prioritize our environmental and physical health. I brought a copy of the email that I sent for each of you, as well as for the public health director, as well as my submitted letter to the Delta County Independent. It's a receipt showing that they received it. Thank you.
Do you mind leaving notes with me?
If you want them, that would be great. They're all taped together in the underwriting.
This is Burquist. I'm going to say, first of all, my apologies. I just checked the spam filter and the email, and that's where that landed, because we've never emailed before.
Okay.
So, please don't think that we were intentionally ignoring you. I suspect that same with the other commissioners.
Thank you for telling me.
And appreciate you bringing this forward. What I'd like to do, because Delta County does not have any commercial airports or commercial airlines, we do not fund or grant any funds towards that kind of work. But I'm going to get you the contacts of Senator Hickenlooper, Representative Jeff Heard, and State Representative Matt Soper.
Thank you.
I think it would be appropriate for them to hear from you. For us, as county commissioners, to do much beyond that is government overreach. We do not have jurisdiction over FFA or anything like that, or FAA, excuse me. You're welcome.
I would echo what Wendell just said. We did not get that because it landed in the wrong. So, I apologize for not getting back to you. I will make an effort to look there more often and see, make sure that things like this don't get overlooked.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I sure appreciate you being here this morning, taking the time out of your morning schedule to come down and talk to us and bring these guys. This is huge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We reiterate what they say, and thank you for being here. Good civic lesson for your kids here and for the concerned citizens. But like Commissioner Coon said, you know, the state and federal represent be the ones to contact because they have the purse strings for that, plus the ability to get something like that accomplished. Where we are not involved in that. Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Todd Or.
Good morning, all. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you. I know have quite as detailed.
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, Todd Or. We're Delta here, 3101 1900 Road. Another concerned citizen on the clouding of our skies. Colorado bill 283, I guess, is reintroducing appropriations for cloud seeding again this year. Cost of about a half million dollars. I was wondering if there's a way we could reach the governor's office up there and approach that bill somehow here. Also, there's, you know, watching these clouds in the sky from these airplanes, there's a gentleman by the name of Dane Wiggington. He's got GeoEngineeringWatch.org. He's been studying this for 20-plus years. He's got a film called The Dimming, and it explains everything, all the testing he's done, research. It's pretty, pretty informing, very, very well informing. He's got research data on aerosol spraying of nanoparticles, including aluminum oxide dust, sulfur dioxide gas, barium, and strontium. So what is this stuff? What's it doing to us? These are toxic chemicals. That's what he's finding in a lot of these aerosol springs. You know, we feel like we're being sprayed like bugs, you know, our kids, our children, our soil, our animals, insects. So if it's just a natural contral going on, as they say, you know, it's just jet fuel just dispersing in the air, why is it lingering forever? And why are those so many states, like Heather just explained, over 31 of them, 25 of them banned it outright? If they're saying something's wrong, I think there's something wrong. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rhonda Brabant? Is that it?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Rhonda Brabant. I live in Delta, up on Rainier Lane. And I'm here to support what the two before me said. The Dane Wiggington is a very good resource. Also, on his site, GeoEngineeringWatch.org. You can watch a recent interview he did with RFK Junior, which is very informative, and that's why I want to be here, so that you will go and you will watch these videos yourself. But what they found out, or what he showed, was that there is a gag order on the news to not even be able to talk about this. So like you wonder, like, why hasn't somebody talked about this? Well, the people that are in control, they know not to have this talked about. It was Johnson in 1962, when he was vice president, when they put a satellite up in the sky. He said, "He who can control the weather controls the world." They knew it then. My understanding from my research is this began, the genesis of it began when they worried about the caps, you know, the Arctic and Antarctic starting to melt. And so this was the beginning of the geoengineering. But then it has grown. It has become a commercial thing. Monsanto has got involved. There's a lot of fingers in this. But if you will go and you will watch the video on GeoEngineeringWatch.org with him talking to RFK Junior, it's a very good dialogue because RFK Junior has the background, being the lawyer, that he has worked with environmental causes, and so he's able to question him and talk to him in a way that might, you know, clear up any confusion. So I just really encourage you to do that. And what these people have said here before, this is a terrible concern. I know I have a friend out in Hotchkiss. She says they're spraying again. They seem to spray more out there across the fields than they do even down here, even though I see the spraying down here. And she had an orchard. She grew up in an orchard out there in Hotchkiss, and she's watched how the landscape has changed through the years. You know, you call it climate change. It's not climate change. It's actually, this is man-made. This is not something that is of the definition that we would call climate change. So that's another reason to watch the video. But anyway, there's many things that I could go into. The aluminum that's been found, you know, there's actually a patent by Monsanto for stressed seeds that can handle aluminum. And so there's information about how, there's data, if you ever watch Why Are They Spring?, which is a documentary, they go into the Monsanto thing. So, like I said, it's.
Ms. Brabant, what is your ask of the commissioners today?
What is my ask of the commissioner?
Yes.
Of awareness. I want you to be aware. Okay? I hope that you will go watch these documentaries, and I hope that you will be aware and use your own conscience.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board this morning and didn't get a chance to sign up? Anybody online?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuller, I would ask that you would give contacts to Ms. Burquist, representatives. Thank you. That takes us to County Clerk Terry Stevenson.
Good morning, commissioners. This morning, I have the minutes for the April 15, 2025 regular Board of County Commissioners minutes for your approval or any changes, deletions, or corrections.
I have none.
This was formatted a little differently, the number.
Oh, did I send you the word without the number or anything? Okay.
Not that it matters, but I have none either. Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome. Thank you. That's all I have to say. First, under Commissioner Businessman, proclamation from Tri-County Health Network requesting May as Mental Health Month. And I believe we have Representative Gere from Tri-County.
Good morning. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Kaissa. I'm the health equity advocate here in Delta County for Tri-County Health Network. Our mission is to create a healthier and thriving community throughout. We actually serve six counties in the western Silver area. So I appreciate you considering making this proclamation.
You have the proclamation.
I do, and I'll read it here in a second. Before I do, is there any questions for our guests today?
No, thank you for coming up. Proclamation is well-written and get the whole month for mental health awareness month, which is great. You know, a lot of kids in Delta County through no farther ado do have mental issues, you know, just from the household situation and atmosphere. And thank you for bringing this forward.
Mr. Fuller? I'd like to read this proclamation out loud then. Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation. This proclamation designates May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Delta County. Whereas mental health is essential to the well-being in our community, whereas Colorado ranks 50th in the prevalence of mental illness indicating Coloradans experience with more mental health challenges and substance use challenges than every other state except one. That's from Mental Health America. Whereas according to Colorado Health Foundation poll in 2024, three in five Coloradans, 59%, reported experiencing a mental health challenge in the past year. Whereas a stigma persists in being a barrier to accessing care with nearly 50% of Coloradans who needed mental health support reporting they did not seek out care due to stigma. Whereas the most recent data on suicide death in our combined region of Delta, Montrose, Hurrah, San Miguel, Gunnison, and Hinsdale Counties indicate 33 community members died by suicide in 2023. Whereas organizations such as Tri-County Health Network are dedicated to shining a light on mental health and bringing hope to those experiencing a mental health challenge through research, education, advocacy, and the resources and urge that we recognize mental health challenges affect all members of our community. Normalize conversations about mental health, suicide, and substance abuse in open and understanding ways to erase stigma and remind community members they are not alone in anything they may be experiencing. Acknowledge that there is no one-size-fits-all program or effort that will be appropriate for all populations or communities, and address a disparity in access to mental health care for underserved and underrepresented groups while advocating to end these disparities. And support the efforts of social movements like We Are The Ones that build upon the innate ability of every individual to take meaningful action to strengthen our communities. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Wendell A. Coons, Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners for Delta County, hereby designate May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Delta County, Colorado. And we'll all sign this, and gentlemen? Sign to do. Come on up.
Does anyone want to hold a green light bulb? Part of the campaign.
Hold a light bulb?
Yeah. I'd be happy to explain it. So part of the campaign is, we're the ones who shine a light on mental health, and green is the color of the affiliations. Mental health awareness. So we ask, you know, public facing buildings, if they'd be willing to put in green light bulbs in order to raise awareness.
Thank you.
Extend your.
Thanks.
You can give mine.
I'll give you these.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, too.
Thank you.
You're doing good.
Appreciate it. And thanks for doing it again. This isn't the.
I know. What are the six counties?
So Delta, Montrose, Red, and San Jose. And if anybody does need mental health resources, try counting us funds and access to all those things, please send us, like, please send people our way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not a laughing matter.
Not at all.
So thank you for taking it seriously and providing those resources.
Okay, next for your consideration is award of 2025 RFQ 02 Newspaper of Record.
There wasn't anything in the package, but I think you understand what we're doing here. Gentlemen, we have, this has come back to us from a previous discussion. It'd be my recommendation to award this to the High Country Shopper as Paper of Record, they've hit all the marks here and have the adequate supervision, circulation, excuse me.
We know what you meant to say.
Yeah.
For the comments. I will move to award the newspaper of record to the High Country Shopper in Spotlight. And this designation be reviewed annually. And encourage all departments within Delta County to use all forms of notifications and publications to inform citizens of our Delta County.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done.
Next for your consideration is an appointment of Cleo Hunt for CSU Extension Board Member. I'm skipping over item number three right now. I believe Sean Gardner will be in here to provide additional details. So we'll move on to number four. Again, appointment of Leo Hunt for the Colorado State University Extension Advisory Board.
What's the term on that?
Three years.
Three years. Looking over his application, he's certainly well-qualified. Or she is.
Well, I move that we appoint Cleo Hunt for a CSU Extension Board Member.
I will second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So done.
Okay, next. Jim, if you want to come forward. You have consideration for the application for historic landmark designation for Jason H. Cooley and Alicia D. Moakley located at 181 Garnet Avenue. You have the application. We were waiting on a signature from the city of Delta as the said property is located within the city of Delta. We now have that. So it is for your consideration and approval. Jim, I don't know if you want to say a few words?
I can just introduce it. I'm Jim Websole, 945 Tracy Street, Delta. And this is a property that was built. It's a private residence today. It was built by Albert Stockham. Mr. Stockham was a mover and traker here in Delta in its early years. He built the Columbine Ball, which you're familiar with. That was originally the Stockham Hardware Company. He also played a role at the Bar I Ranch up in Cedar Edge. He was involved in Antelope Hill development. And he also started one of the first banks in Delta, First National Bank. It was located in the building at the Chamber of Commerce, formerly occupied. We have, I represent the Delta County Historic Landmark Board this morning, and we have approved the application for Mr. Cooley to place that property on the historic register. That's why I'm here today. Are there any questions?
I'd be looking at the timeline and the pictures in the package. That's an amazing.
It is. It's an amazing property and one of the few that has the original barn next to it. Quite unusual.
And 120 years old.
Yes. Built in 1903, finished in 1904. It was one of three houses that were in a row that used to be visible from downtown Delta. They're right on the edge of the Garnet Mesa.
Any questions for Mr. Websole?
I have none. Good presentation. Thank you.
Do you need an action on this one?
We do, and it's a chair sign on this one.
Well, I would move that we approve the application for historic landmark designation for Jason H. Cooley and Alicia D. Moakley, located at 181 Garnet Avenue in Delta, and authorized your signing.
I second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Websole. It's taken a lot of work to get to this point. I know.
Well, I've emailed them. Okay, next for your consideration is a resolution requesting that the U.S. Secretary of Interior Doug Burgum deliver the keynote address at the 26 Joe Energy Summit in Grand Junction, Colorado.
I'll pick up on this one. We have been requested through AGNC and Jolt, which I'm part of, to ask Secretary of Interior Doug Burgum to be part of our energy summit for Grand Junction next year. We all know that western Colorado has honed the many types of energy, oil, gas, coal, uranium, just to name a few, plus the wind resources and solar resources that could be available. We think it would be very fitting for Secretary Burgum to join us and give us some leadership on where he thinks the United States headed in the Energy Department. So it'd be my recommendation to the commissioners that we approve this resolution and forward it on.
What number?
I don't. 15.
Did you get several of these over here as well?
First one from Delta. Well, I move that we approve the resolution number 15, requesting U.S. Secretary of Interior Doug Burgum to deliver the keynote address at the 2026 Joe Energy Summit in Grand Junction, Colorado.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Terry, do you have the official copies? If you can give me the official copy, forward it on.
Okay, we'll move back to item number three. We're going to move the 2025 RFP 17 Land Use Permit Management System. We're going to move that to a future BOCC meeting as that committee has not met with all the vendors yet. Okay, moving to item number seven. Consideration and Chairman's Signature regarding the government obligation contract between United Fleet Services LLC and Delta County. Okay, moving to item number seven, consideration and chairman's signature regarding regarding the government obligation contract between United Fleet Services LLC and Delta County.
Do you want to tell us a little bit more about that, Robin?
This here is for the the two recent vehicles then that have went under lease with United Fleet. Uh each time then um with. United Fleet then the commissioner sign as the uh new vehicles are moved into service for Delta County, so it's the two vehicles, one for Public Works and one for Administration.
It'd be my recommendation to the commissioners, go ahead and ratify this um for standard piece of business.
Why move that we approve. A document regarding government obligation contract between United Fleet Services LLC and Delta County and authorize the chair to sign.
Second vote. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so done.
The next for your consideration is to ratify the signatures on the letter to the Colorado Wild wildfire resiliency code board regarding the latest draft of the Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code. Chris Stewart, O E M is here, the reason it is being ratified as the date for submittal was due last Friday, May second, so Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
As you know, we had a work session, you directed staff to prepare the letter which you guys all signed on May first. Uh to send to the wildfire resiliency code board regarding the their proposal for statewide wildfire resiliency building codes um that the state must implement by July first. Um, so that was submitted on May second, the deadline. Um, and then the public hearing for that is this Thursday, May eighth in Montrose.
And May ninth and.
In May ninth and Glendale, Carbondale now, they moved it from Glenwood to Carbondale. Any questions on this?
First of all, I want to thank Chris and staff for their hard work in getting this letter pulled together. This is another unfunded mandate from the state of Colorado with a very top-down approach to. Uh wildfire resiliency codes, fire codes and building codes. Um, I'll be testifying on the ninth in Glenwood, Carbondale. Do you know the status of H B twenty-five, S B twenty-five one forty-two today?
Um, as of yesterday, it had passed third reading in the House, so it should be going to the Senate because it had already passed or to the governor's office because it had already passed the Senate, so. Uh I guess we're at the determining if Governor Polis signs it or not, um that will extend the deadlines. Um if passed, that's really the meat and potatoes, it's only a two and a half page bill uh to extend the adoption for the counties and or. Uh authorizing governing bodies from uh October first of twenty twenty-five until April first of twenty twenty-six. Uh the state's deadline appears to still remain at July first, twenty twenty-five, and then. Enforcement of the code would not begin until July one of twenty twenty-six if the governor signs this bill.
What is the government feeling, you think he's going to sign that thing or?
I don't know.
Get the vote in what the House, but in the Senate, it was overwhelmingly bipartisan.
The House was. Like, it would mainly Democrat, I think every Republican voted against it, um and.
Of the new bill?
Yes. Yeah, it was not a uniform decision on in the House, so I don't know. I don't know if you've heard any thing through C C I on that, because I have not.
We have not, other than it's it's been completed and headed to the governor's office.
Yeah, there there's been no communications to the Emergency Management uh S E M A Association.
So thank you for all your hard work, I see it's a seven-page document, so that's kind of a short document for you. But thank you again and to your team, you know, this is well-written, put together, it plays out our reasons why. It's an unfunded mandate and with the condition that the state of Colorado is financially in, it it is kind of surprising that uh. Something like this would come about at this time, but thank you for all your hard work, thank you.
I'll say the same thing that Mike said, we really appreciate your putting your time into this, we'll be back into this because um this thing is an extreme overreach like. Like everything else could seem lately, and I would think I was on about page thirty-seven of the draft when I got the message, you guys had your summary letter done, and so I skipped out on that and went right to your your summary and. It nailed everything, but I felt need to be addressed, and I appreciate you. You're tackling that and getting it done in a timely manner, getting turned in, whether it falls on deaf ears or listening ears remains to be seen, but. Um, yeah, we. We got to do all we can to kind of just nip this stuff in the bud because it just keeps coming at us from every angle, every time we turn around, there's some other. Letter that says, here, do this, do this, and by the way, there's no training, there's no funding, you guys figure it out. And as we talked about at our special meeting, you know, we're. Delta County is one of fifteen counties across the state that does not even have a building to fund it, in order for the people who want a building to fund it, build it. And so you have the state come in and say, figure it out, and figure out a way to pay for it is completely unacceptable. I will be at the Montrose meeting on Thursday to give my three minutes, or whatever they're allowing us to say against this thing. But again, thank you for what you've done and your team, Mindy and everybody that's involved in this, and. The letter was so well done, so thanks again, Chris.
Gentlemen, this is an action item.
Why move that we ratify the signatures on the letter to Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code Board regarding latest draft of the Colorado Wildfire Resilience Code.
I will second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done.
And the fire teams have been all notified, do you want me to provide notifications to the municipalities at the meeting on Thursday and Friday in case they wish to attend as well?
You certainly share a letter barred wide.
Right.
Thank you.
Hey, next, Lindsay, with the schedule, please.
After this meeting. The Republican meeting, six, seven thirty at the church. Um, Thursday, maybe eight thirty to ten A M, you can see call. Three to five P M, um there is the wild resilience local uh third floor. Is that probably the most others name on that? Saturday, May tenth is the Hotchkiss sheepdog trials and. Thursday, May fifteenth, eight thirty to ten is an A G N C legislative call.
Are you sure that's still going on or?
It should be, should should not be because the legislature.
Yeah, that one may be.
Yeah.
Done.
Yeah, we may be finished on the eighth.
For the year.
The eighth of. Thank you. And then Saturday, May seventeenth, from eight noon, we do have a community Adobe Buttes cleanup day. That the community is welcome to join us at, um it is going to be from eight A M to twelve P M, we're meeting at Truck Road. And um Fairview Road in Delta, we will provide gloves, trash bags. Um, the we're also, Delta Compost is going to provide uh water and snacks. Might have some A T Vs out there, it's a really great time, so even if you're not able to attend, if you can help spread the word. Uh is on our Facebook page, again, that is May seventeenth, eight to noon, I'll get some flyers uh handed out here in the bin. Um, Monday, May nineteenth, four to five thirty, there's a one Delta County Board meeting. May twentieth, eight thirty to noon. Next, four county commissioners, where you were scheduled meeting. May twentieth, one thirty to three thirty, there's a room bridge work session by sixty dot street. May twentieth, three thirty to five, there's Florida Health meeting. Meeting first, nine to two, I don't mind. And once, but I have the mission for me.
One, the fifteenth, uh we have the Delta Hospital run that they wanted us to attend.
Yeah, the color run for the, it's a fundraiser for the oncology unit at the hospital is five thirty. At the hospital, there'll be commissioners cooking hamburgers, if y'all know what a color run is, please bring your children, just bring a pickup to take a moment. And then on the twenty-sixth is Memorial Day. So.
You said the the hospital is at five thirty?
Yeah, I'd be there around five. And for Memorial Day, please check the newspapers to see where uh memorial services are being held at a various cemetery seat they attend.
Thank you, I know.
Thank you, Lindsay, appreciate it.
About May thirty-first, the three-day of the dump?
Okay, yeah, we did, all right. Uh, May thirty-first, we do have three-day at the Adobe Buttes Landville.
I'm called dump, I'm at the center of it.
It's the Adobe Buttes Landville, um so if you're interested, there's more. Please check that out because there are restrictions to what you can say, um and you do need to be a Delta County resident. So please go to our Facebook page, which is um Delta County C O. And that's May thirty-first, that will be from eight thirty to fifteen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh jail reports, we got three of them this week. Uh, Delta County Sheriff Jail Report for Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, male inmates, county jail thirty-four, female inmates, county jail four. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, three, female inmates, Department of Corrections, two, total of forty-three. Average daily inmate population for the week of April seventh through fourteen was forty-nine point four seven. For Monday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, male inmates, county jail thirty-six, female inmates, county jail four. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, three, female inmates, Department of Corrections, two, for a total of forty-five. Average daily inmate population for the week of April fourteen through twenty-one was fifty point eight seven. For Monday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, male inmates, thirty-one, female inmates, county jail seven. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, three, female inmates inmates, Department of Corrections, two, total of forty-three. Average daily inmate population for the week of April twenty-one through twenty-eight was fifty-one point one two. Is there any other business for the regular session of the commissioners this morning?
Not at this time.
Then we'll stand recessed until planning at ten A M, again, I want to thank everybody for being here. Mrs. Burquist, before you take off, I'd like to visit with your kids, if you don't mind, very good, thank you, we are recessed. We on?
Mike's on.
Good morning, everybody, again, we are back uh with our Board of County Commissioners meeting for May sixth, twenty twenty-five, uh it's time for planning, I will turn this over to Mister Gardner.
Thank you, we have two projects that appear consideration today, um as Brittany tells me, we usually go from oldest to newest in 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 the order of the projects, but I'd like to reverse them and. Take project twenty-four dash zero seven four K first, if that's okay, commissioners? Okay. Um, Mister K owns two lots that belong to separate subdivisions and have different zoning designations. And he adjusted the legal boundaries between the two lots through a replat. Resulting in one of the lots becoming split between two zones. Um, that lot, and we'll go to the next slide, is um an L-shaped lot, uh it's lot three A. Uh on the left side there, you can see that it is split between an eight-twenty zone and an eight-five zone. Uh the the lot is a total of five point eight acres. Um, again, the horizontal bottom part of the L shape of the lot is in eight-twenty, the vertical part of the L-shaped lot is in eight-five. Uh being five point eight acres, Mister K has applied to rezone the whole lot to eight-five. Uh the P C um held a duly noted or noticed hearing on April ninth, they voted nine to zero to recommend that the B O C C. Approved the rezoning of the southern two point eight nine acres of lot three A from eight-twenty to eight-five. So that the resulting um lot three A is zoned in its entirety, eight-five. Uh as such, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to. Find that amending the twenty twenty-four land use code zoning maps, rezoning the subject property from eight-twenty to eight-five. Meets the criteria of chapter eight, section four of the twenty-four land use code and um rezone the southern. And to rezone the southern two point eight nine acres of lot three A from eight-twenty to eight-five. Required as a result of the replat of lot two, Simeon Minor and lot three, Kid Minor subdivisions, which created the split zoning in the first place. Do the commissioners have any questions about the criteria for approving an obligation for rezoning?
I have none.
I think it's pretty uh pretty well explained.
Uh, the applicant is here with us, Mister K.
Mister K, is anything, would you like to join us, and is there anything else we'd like to bring to our attention here? Make sure that microphone's on.
Did you want to postpone this or?
No, it's it's pretty straightforward, it's simple, you know, when the original zoning was done, they did brush-brow strokes and put. Lots, no matter what size they were, into zones that didn't make a lot of sense, didn't meet the qualifications of the eight-five, because I only had less than five acres that didn't meet the qualification eight-twenty, eight-thirty-five. So this was an opportunity to fix the zoning maps, bring them into compliance, the previous the the land that was adjacent to me was already previously zoned eight-five. So I just thought it would make sense to bring it into compliance, so I broke off three acres or close to it to make. The piece that I originally owned, which was less than three acres, into an eight-five qualified lot, and we're just going through that process to do that now, just helping identify the lots. Around me, m- most of the lots, most of the properties around me are A-five, some are, they're all, some are zoned eight-thirty-five and they still don't meet the eight-thirty-five qualifications or less than thirty-five acres. But that would be for another time when somebody else comes in, it's not for now, just trying to help. Any other question?
Any questions for Mister K?
None.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else here to say, speak to this issue today?
I wouldn't, that's not the one I'm here for.
And we got a resolution?
Yeah, this will be a sixteen if we choose. So what would be the will of the board today?
Well, I move that we approve the resolution approving project number twenty-four oh seven four slash K, a rezone to amend the twenty twenty-four Delta County. Land use code zoning maps to rezone the southern two point eight nine acres of lot three A on the replat of the lot. Two Seminole Minor. And lot three, Kid Minor subdivision from agriculture twenty acres, eight-twenty to agriculture five acres, A-five. The project is located on the west end of twenty-five twenty-five road, Cedar Edge parcel, ending in zero zero four.
Now, what? Maybe that is the one I'm here for.
I'm saying, sir, I'm sorry, we've already got a motion.
Oh, they want to know your name and address.
We've already got a motion on the floor.
Okay.
We'll second that motion.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? What would be the will then? Or all in favor? So done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. K. Do we have that resolution prepared to sign? It's back to you then, Mr. Burton.
The next project is MS zero four dash seventy-three. That would be a subdivision application from two thousand and four. It has been two decades in review. The Larga Vista subdivision. The applicant is here present with us as well, so if you have any questions afterward. The motion is to accept the final plat for the three-lot subdivision. It's in an eight-five zoning district. The property is located approximately three point three miles northwest of Cedar Ridge on the south side of Yumenta Road and the west side of Green Valley Road. The Larga Vista subdivision consists of three vacant lots with approved accesses from engineering. Lot one is on the far right side of the, you can see the plat up there. Is four point thirty-one acres with access from Green Valley Road to the east. Lot two is four point ninety-six acres with access from Yumenta Road to the north. And Lot three in the middle is nine point ninety-seven acres with access from Yumenta Road to the north. Like I said, the application for the subdivision is over twenty years old. I inherited it from Kate Kirk in March while the final plat was being prepared. The history of this application is right here. It's thick and messy, I will say. It is way too long for a simple three-lot subdivision, twenty acres. There were several submittals in its early years and obviously several extensions granted to the applicant over the years. Somehow, somewhere along from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty, planning was taking subdivision applications to the board for to to vacate. And during this time, the applicant reached out to planning about finishing the subdivision and it was granted an extension again. But for whatever reason, a final plat, which was submitted in two thousand and nineteen, was never finally processed. Then finally, at the end of two thousand and twenty-one, the applicant finally got a hold of somebody in planning to get the final plat completed once again. But a real assessment of the final plat, red lines and such, and requirements to to complete it were not really provided until April of twenty twenty-three. Following that, there were health problems with the surveyor who had done the final plat two thousand and nineteen and he wasn't able to complete the work. So the applicant contracted another surveyor to complete the final plat. And in so doing, some errors were found in the monuments that were set on the property. So that caused another delay and required a boundary agreement to clean up the situation before the final plat was completed. Following the boundary correction, a revised plat was submitted finally on May first of this year for the final plat and it's ready for the commissioners' consideration. So I went through this big thick file and just ensured that all the reviews that had been done in the path had covered all the requirements for the final plat. There is no right-of-way dedication because the property boundaries come right up to the edge of the right-of-way on both roads that order property. Also, the the surveyor for the project is here with us to confirm all of these things. Because the subdivision was begun well before zoning maps, it was considered not subject to zoning designation. It is an A-five zoning designation and all the lots are just about five, well, the two lots that are under five acres are four point to what, ninety-six acres and four point thirty-one acres? And then the other lot is nine point ninety-seven acres. Water for each lot, each lot has a conditional well decree that has been granted reasonable diligence for another six years. The wells will be completed when a pump is installed. Each is permitted, each well is permitted for one single-family dwelling and for twelve hundred square feet of lawn or garden. And then fire mitigation is dealt with primarily in the covenants that are prepared for of the subdivision. They detail wildfire mitigation recommendations, including a three-thousand gallon system for the subdivision as recommended by the Fire District Chief.
Three thousand for all three lots or per lot?
For all three lots.
Okay, thank you.
So staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners accept the final plat for MS zero four zero seventy-three Larga Vista Minor Subdivision and authorize the chair to send a plat. And the applicant and the surveyor are present to answer any questions, in addition to myself.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Commissioner may ask a question. So Sean, it appears that included in your staff packet are the number of quick claim deeds that were signed about six years ago.
Right.
Why? And have those actually been recorded already?
It was, they were provided and described as a draft, if you will. We have fresh quick claim deeds drafted and ready for notarizing and signing.
So they've not been recorded?
No, these have not been recorded, but they are essentially what we have updated now for the current year. But these were prepared in two thousand and nineteen when the first final plat was ready to be recorded. The same holds with the covenants that are provided as a sample of the covenants that are going to be submitted.
How many quick claim deeds?
There's three.
Three.
One for each lot. None for the right-of-way because there's no right-of-way dedication.
Other questions for Mr. Gardner?
I'm not seeing the three thousand gallon tank.
That's that's because the covenants that I provided were the ones that I had at the time that I was submitting the board packet, but the ones that we have now, the owner of the property brought has that included.
Other questions?
I have none.
Is the applicant here? Are you the applicant? Do you? Please pronounce your last name for me.
Graywall.
Graywall. Mr. Graywall, do you have anything else to add to this conversation here as we debate?
Just thank God for Mr. Gardner. I went through several different planners. That's one reason it took so long to get it done. So the reason, one reason it took so long is in two thousand and eight, I was actually ready to record. Barbara Ball was a planner at the time. But the market had really taken a hit and I asked her if I could put it on hold for to record it later, which she said yes. So that later became many, many years. When I came back in around two thousand and sixteen, started working as a planner here and it just never got it rolling again, but that planner after two years, I think she or he quit, I think Kelly was the name, and then I went to the next planner and started all over again. I went through that process again and then a third planner. So that's one reason it's taken so long. And then finally, I think it was Kate Kelly before you, she really got the ball rolling again and but that's when we found, we brought in, we had to have the survey updated and found that Mr. Schaaf found that there was some discrepancy. So that again took a big amount, a lot of time. So in any case, it's finally only happened, so.
Any questions for Mr. Graywall?
I have none.
No. None here.
On the well permits, that the well's been drilled?
Yes.
Just waiting installation of a pump for?
Yes.
A gentleman, it'd be my recommendation to you that we approve this this final plat. But include that the, what is it called? The protective covenants also be accepted for those, for these lots, particularly when in light of the new WUIC code's coming, if there's fire protection required.
You, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I move that we accept the final plat for the three-lot subdivision in the eight-five zoning district. Located on the south side of Lynch Road, west side of Green Valley Road. Parcel number, you want the parcel number in there, three one nine five oh one three zero 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 four five.
And authorize the chair?
Authorize the chair.
And that the protective covenants provided apply to each of the three lots.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so done.
I just recommend to whoever's going to end up recording this is it's a little complicated because you've got a plat that references protective covenants. You've got protective covenant, covenant, and I say by reception number. And it's protective covenants that reference the plat by reception number, which so I don't know how you're going to do that. Then you've got deeds that that reference the plat by reception number. So just please pay attention to that. Make sure they're all properly recorded and proper references. It might be a little bit of challenging in this particular case because there's a lot of cross-reference.
We can navigate those. So just please remind them that they'll need to be in.
Brittany and Sean, I don't know how many more legacy projects are out there like this, but thank you for getting this completed.
I think we have a few still.
So. Endeavor to persevere, Mr. Graywall. Is there anything else before the board today?
I have none.
Terry?
I have none.
Hearing none, we will adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for being here today.